We're gonna start right now. It's not, you don't hear me? I was in the front line. Okay, here we go. Okay, welcome, by the way, welcome. Thanks for coming. All order. Six thirty-four. Chair, Paul Robati. Roll call. Let's take these of that. No, you got it.
Alred. Deval. De Vilbus. Galdera. Kachuk.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Kohler. Lee.
Here.
Quadri. Quadri. Anwar, you're muted. Okay, well, I see Anwar, a member of Quadri online. Oh, yeah, he's typing in chat that he's here. Solis.
Lindsay.
Sorry, did you say, was that Lindsay?
Yes, I'm so sorry. I'm on the phone. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Solis. Solomon. Robati. We don't have Quorum at this time. Chair, with six of thirteen members present, just need one more for Quorum.
One more.
So we'll just have to play by the year, by year. My heart of hearts, somebody will show up. Okay, got my biggest crest. Okay, so we do that now. We're gonna go next to public safety. Honolulu Fire Department's here, which is great to see you guys. Come on up.
Hello, Fire Friday Waters, Engine Twenty-Nine. Just getting Koili with me. Just gonna read some stats for the month of April. Fires, we have no structure, no wildland brush, no cooking. We have two nuisance fires, which includes rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle, and seven activated alarms. That's no fire. Emergencies, we had one hundred and eight medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, twelve motor vehicle collisions, and zero mountains, zero ocean, and zero hazardous materials incidents. The fire tip of the month. Wildland fires significantly threaten Hawaii's landscapes, wildlife, and communities with dry conditions and everyday activities contributing to the increased risk. It's crucial to take proactive measures to prevent and mitigate wildland fires. Lighten the load. Reduce fire, reduce fuels and the possibility of ignition of your landscape by maintaining your yard and cleaning your gutters. Clear, cool, and contain. Clear vegetation ten feet around campfires and barbecues. Keep a shovel and water nearby and put them out cold before walking away. Watch the spark. Ensure machinery, chainsaws and weed trimmers and recreational vehicles with operating spark arresters are maintained regularly. Looking for it with online resources, HFD is fire.honolulu.gov. The Department of Emergency Management, and Hawaii Wildlife Management Organization. That's H W M O dot org slash lookout. Any questions for the department?
Anybody, any board member requesting? No? Anybody in the audience? Grab a microphone. Grab a microphone.
Aloha. I'm a resident at the Marco Polo, and I have a question about fire blankets. Are there? Anything online would probably be a viable fire blanket? Or are there good ones, bad ones, cheap ones that are no, not worth buying?
As far as fire blankets, the Honolulu Fire Department cannot take an endorsement stance to say which is, which may be better than others. It's not for us to say. The best way would be to do your own online research. I know I've seen a few commercials myself. Some on, online, social media ads and whatnot, as well as. But as far as HFD's stance towards endorsement, we cannot.
You can't like unendorse something? You can't say any that don't work? I mean.
No, because, and the reason for that is unless we do our own, our own research with those fire blankets, that would be the best way for us to make a stance on it, as we just right now.
Can I make a recommendation that the Fire Department consider doing some tests and making a recommendation?
I can take that back from the operations office.
Thank you.
Hi, Alison Peterson, also resident at the Marco Polo. One of the things that we're discussing right now at our board meetings are the lithium batteries. And we just had in our newsletter that, you know, it says that if one explodes and starts a fire, you can't put it out. So to just let it, there's no option but to just let it burn. Is that correct?
When it comes to lithium batteries, lithium batteries, for those of you who don't already know, that is the reason why you cannot pack them in luggage and put them under the belly of the plane for reasons like that, because lithium batteries are real unpredictable at the time. And nationwide, they've been having a lot of issues with lithium batteries with starting nuisance fires and whatnot, with your electric bikes and anything that is driven by lithium batteries. So there's, there's a lot of truth to lithium batteries that once it starts to catch fire, we have a difficult time dealing with it, electric cars being the same.
As with a lot of different things, you know, it's the laws catch up to the technology and.
Correct.
Are you aware of anything going on at either the federal or state level about, you know, legislation or how to regulate?
How to regulate? That's a good question, and we, we had some property managers actually come to the station and ask for recommendations and whatnot. And like I said, we are not in a position where we can endorse or unendorse like, like you had said earlier, but we can point them to certain websites. For example, if you were to Google or search lithium batteries and recommendations, they will guide, they will take you to an NFPA website. And through the NFPA website, they can, you can follow it down and it'll make different recommendations on, on how to best deal with it, including regulations. But as far as regulations, like you said, you have to kind of catch up to where it is today.
Can I make a recommendation, as Karen did, that maybe, it seems that not a lot of people are aware of, you know, the dangers and, and the differences in the kinds of fire that it causes that maybe we do some kind of awareness campaign about it?
Yes, yes, you're absolutely right about that. And like I said, there have been individuals who have visited our station to ask for recommendations and whatnot. And what I do is I point them to the website. And on the website, a lot of times, they'll follow another building's model on how they're dealing with it. For example, the storage of electric bikes in the unit or bringing electric bikes into an elevator and so on and so forth. Yeah, so you're absolutely right with that. Over time, it seems that as technology moves forward, we kind of catch up on the backside to try and deal with it.
Thank you.
So in other words, there's no way to put out a fire on a lithium battery?
It's very difficult to do that because of how it burns. Yeah, so, so we do have issues.
Can I, so I'm with Biki Bike, and we are planning on bringing electric bikes here, which will be parked outside, but since in, in our transportation industry, a lot of our, a lot of other scooter and e-bike shops have, have a large bucket of sand that you can kind of douse the lithium in. But the best way to avoid this issue, I mean, the news out of New York, New York City and New York State is pretty tragic. But they're finding that a lot of those fires are started by people that have had their batteries repaired or the e-bike wasn't UL certified or had some certification. So that's what they're finding. A lot of these fires are like gray market bikes or they've been damaged in some way. And I have a question for the, for the Fire Department. I'm a resident of Moa Ilii and are building Honolulu, Honolulu, Hano Towers up there behind my pucks. Is it okay that they, they changed the lock on the roof, the emergency roof access to be only security code? And no one has that code of the management? Is that something we should bring to the board?
I would talk to your building management, bring, take your concerns about emergency access to the roof.
Okay.
Because that would be a concern. So now when you're talking about roof access, you're talking about a stairwell that leads up to a doorway that takes you to the roof, or are you talking about a ladder with a hatch?
No, it's, so originally, when I moved in, the, the emergency stairway went into the laundry room. And then from the laundry room on the, on the roof, like penthouse, then the door could be opened with your, your, your household key, you know, the, the front door key. But since, I don't know, two, three years ago, they put in a, a security lock that only management can use. And they've also put a chain link around the stairs, the stairs on the last levels. You can't even jump over the fence to get on the roof anymore if you had to evacuate upwards. So it's kind of curious. Potentially, I, this is outside my, my awareness, so I don't know if that's acceptable or not acceptable, so.
Yes, so first, I would take that up with, with your building management. Because anything dealing with safety, you're right, it would be a concern. But I would start with the building management first, as to why it was allowed previously. And like you said, in the past two or three years, it was changed and whatnot. Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Going once, twice. Thank you for coming. Okay, that's a good one. Very good. Okay. Honolulu Police Department. We've got District One. District One here? No?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Segusio representing the District One community of responsibility just west of Haoli, so we have a very small sliver for you guys. I hope everyone is doing well, and let me get right into the stats so I can keep my time short. So motor vehicle deaths for the month of April were three. The previous month was two. Burglaries were three, previous was one. Thefts were seven, previous to that was three. UNVs or car break-ins were five. It was five also for the previous month. Assaults were four. Previous month was also four. Six assaults were zero, previous month was one. No graffiti cases reported. And the drug offenses were one, previous month was two. Total cost for service for your area was four hundred and twenty-two compared to the previous month of three hundred eighty-seven. There are no criminal breaches to report at this time. So we're gonna be continuing the SPOs, SNOs. We're trying to do these cleanups at least once a week, so it's gonna be four times monthly. We're gonna try to concentrate our efforts on the Kalakaua corridor between King and Kalakaua. Oh, King and Kapulani, yeah, sorry. And then just to touch bases on the, on our staffing, two weeks ago, we just recently graduated twenty-one new officers, one of which was female. That was the two hundred and eleventh class. There are currently one senior class and one recruit class about to start. So at that point, there will be forty-two new recruits at the academy learning how to be police officers, and four of those would be female. And the safety tip for the month, I'm gonna just give some props to Corporal Don Farmo, you know, from District Four Night Watch. He has a very active social media page. He touched bases on the spoofing scams that are going on islandwide. We have many numerous notifications from our command to kind of let the public know and news breaks. The hook for these criminals are the use of law enforcement. So several family members of mine gave me a call saying that law enforcement is calling them, saying that they have warrants or they missed jury duty or some sort of, you know, wrongdoing in regards to that. Just realize that they very, sound very official. The phone numbers come back to city and county, sometimes police departments or state county and law enforcement organizations. You're always reconnected to someone, so it really sounds official. Usually the dollar amount number is four thousand dollars or less. They're gonna be asking for gift cards or monetary, money transfers. And in, in my situation, it was kind of ironic that they choose recently retired people in regards to these spoofs. So just, we're asking our community members just to be safe out there and not to take anything lightly. And just like I said, I want to reiterate, law enforcement in any capacity will not be calling people for monetary payment for any type of warrant. Yeah, we just won't want to arrest you in regards to that. With that, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
I have one question. We have a group of folks living on Young and Punahou. Right there on the corner, a little bit down. It's become a community back there. So anyway, you guys can go back there and, because they're all over. I think they moved from Kalakaua to there.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So we're, we're, we're kind of moving around in regards to that. So just realize this, I think that one particular area you guys are talking about is, is actually private property. We cannot just go onto private property and, you know, do our cleanups. We're taking care of city, county, and state properties at this point in time that border Kalakaua. But I'll definitely bring that back to my command and see what we can do. Maybe we can get our community policing team out there to speak to these people and get them some referrals.
Thank you. Anybody else? Board, nobody? Board, anybody on board? Have anything? No? Anybody? Nobody? Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Chair, so. Yeah, is it okay to ask a question?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Chair. This is, sorry about that, Chair. My name is Ian Ross. Thank you, Lieutenant Segusio. I had a brief question. Actually, first, Chair, mahalo for bringing up Young and Punahou. That is literally my backyard. I'm really happy that you brought that up with the lieutenant. Certainly an area that needs a lot of help. I actually have a small point about Houston Street for the lieutenant. I was talking to some of the residents on Houston Street, and there are a couple of cars that just have not been moved for about two or three months in front of Eight-O-Ah Houston Gardens. I used to live on Houston. It's certainly a place that is in dire need of parking. I just wanted to see if the lieutenant can potentially send someone by to ticket it or do something. They're not even getting tickets currently. One reason I thought, thought to bring this up is I've definitely been hearing a lot about how when the cars aren't doing a lot of turnover, Department of Transportation Services considers those as areas to put in those fee parking or, you know, the, the coin operation there. And we're seeing that right now on Eisenberg Street between South Baratang and Kapilani, which I know is a huge issue for a lot of the neighbors in that area. I hate to see that happen on places like Houston too. So I just wanted to bring this to the lieutenant's attention. Thank you very much, Chair, for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Chair Ross. I didn't realize you come to this board also, but in regards to that last question, in regards to Austin Street, I'm gonna defer that to Lieutenant Thompson. That is his particular area of responsibility. But if you have any type of parking violations anywhere you live, just go ahead and contact nine-one-one and let us service that call.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Again, thank you for coming.
Hey, good evening. Lieutenant Thompson from District Seven. As far as that parking complaint in Houston, I'll, I'll send some info out and have people look on that, the two vehicles that haven't moved. I'll get into the stats for the month. Total calls for service, six thousand two hundred eighty-four calls. There are nineteen motor vehicle thefts, ten burglaries, thirteen thefts, and twenty-one car break-ins. To piggyback along the lines of the safety tip regarding scams, yeah, anytime in my, in my experience, anytime that someone requests money via gift card, online payment, Western Union, it's, it should be a big red flag, especially for someone that's unsolicited. And any type of like lottery or purchases on Craigslist, Facebook Marketplace, et cetera. If they're requesting money via gift card or unsolicited via gift card, a green dot card, something, stuff like that, it's a big red flag that is a scam. And I'm ready for any questions.
Any questions? Or District Seven? No? Nope? We got to read. Thank you for coming. Okay, thank you. Okay. Now we have one more. There we go.
Thank you, Chair, for entertaining me for a few minutes. My name is Ryan Nishibun. I'm an assistant chief with the Honolulu Police Department. These two lieutenants actually are within my district, so I cover basically from Kalihi all the way out to Hawaii Kai Makapu'u'u'u'u'u'u'. So tonight I'm here in a different capacity though. I just wanted to share a little bit about a road closure that we're gonna be doing for Special Olympics. So we're having our thirty-ninth annual Person Yen Bank Troy Barboza Law Enforcement Torch Run. So this year was a little different because of all the activities that we're having in Waikiki. We have the Fest Pack, we have a whole L A M, we have some other activities going on. We have to change our route this year, just for this year. So we're gonna have a group of runners start at the fire station so we can maintain our legacy status with the Department of Transportation Services for permit purposes. So a small group will be running from the fire station along Kapuhulu Avenue onto Old Wiley and into the back gate, the Quarry Road for UH, where we're gonna end up by Les Marakami Stadium. The other group, at the same time, will start from that back gate. They'll run down, I believe, I guess that's Old Wiley to King Street where it meets up. And then they'll run around down King Street, they'll turn up University, turn right on Dole, and then into the main parking lot for the lower campus. So, you know, there may be a little bit of congestion, but, you know, the runners are pretty fast. I think it's only about a mile, little over a mile from Kapuhulu to the stadium, and then from the stadium back into the parking lot again. So traffic, you know, inconvenience would be very minimal. Again, this is probably the only time that we're gonna do it. Next year, we'll hopefully be back in Waikiki. So I'll take any questions, if you guys have any?
Any questions?
I'm sorry, June seventh. And the run will probably start somewhere between seven-thirty, seven-fifty. We haven't confirmed the times yet. But it'll be in that general area. So hopefully the rush hour traffic will have kind of subsided already. It'll be minimal inconvenience to the Makali area. So we're gonna, it'll be a progressive shutdown, so we're only gonna take one lane on King Street. So when we come out of the back gate, I believe there's just one lane coming down anyways, and then splits off, right? So we'll stay in the right most lane, the Mauma most lane, and then we'll turn up University again, we'll stay in the right lane, and then we'll turn right onto Dole Street, and then back down into the parking lot. So we'll try and keep everybody together so that we minimize the street closures. So I think that area, maybe if anything, one lane coming up University, maybe clogged for just a little bit, yeah. But again, we're doing it at a time where we're trying to minimize the most amount of traffic. It's about between seven-thirty, seven-fifty at night. Yeah, nighttime. Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, use the microphone, please.
Post it on the newspaper so we can actually see. So you're gonna post it on the newspaper so we can actually see where, where the, the route is and what the street closures will be? That'll make it easier for us.
We normally on our HPD's websites will post it on our social media, and I will defer that question also to Tracy Bender, who is from Special Olympics Hawaii.
I believe that is part of the permitting process, so we actually have another HPD police officer who is volunteering his time to assist us with that permit. And so I'm gonna check with him tomorrow, but it is part of our qualifications to uphold that permit, so I would like to say yes. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Questions? Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Okay, next. We have the Border Water Supply. There we are.
Right. All right, good evening. I'm Stephen from Nordstrom from the Border Water Supply. Our monthly announcement for May is there was no main breaks to report in April through the Makali Neighborhood Board District. And we do encourage folks to go to our website, borderwatersupply.com/protectawahuwater or protectawahuwater.org. This is where you can learn the latest about the Border Water Supply's operational actions in response to the Red Hill crisis. This includes weekly pumping charts. We have the recent drinking and monitoring of well test results, as well as news and updates on Red Hill, water conservation tips and rebates, as well as a very nice little historical part about our history. And last month, I believe, I received a question about Red Hill in the latest update, so I'll provide a quick response to that. So the latest response on that is the Navy is still taking out the last parts of the sludge out of the pipe. The Navy is still dealing with their lawsuits with the various families and the Border Water Supply, that's the Navy families that is on the military base. And the Border Water Supply continues to do weekly testings around the Red Hill area, and there has been no contamination found. We do post those on that website that I told you about, protectawahuwater.org. And that is the announcement.
Anybody else have any questions? Nothing about Red Hill.
Oh, and I did drop a flyer over here. It's a, about the Border Water Supply's claim with the Navy, so it has all information about where the money's going. So just in case you're interested, it's over there on the table.
Thought we'd have questions for that. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Next, Michael Keefe, Mayor's Representative. Okay. Okay. Michael's not gonna be here. He put his notes in Google Drive, excuse me. And you're all welcome to, to it, okay? Next. Yes. It's in there. She said.
In the chat, but it was in here. It's this, this memo in here.
Memo.
Okay, all right, excuse me. Okay, next. University of Hawaii Manoa. Elmer is back in town.
Hello, Chair. Hello, everyone. Elmer Kai, University of Hawaii. Sorry I've been out for a while. I think February is the last time I reported back to you guys. And let me give you some simple updates, what's happening on campus. As you note, yesterday, well, yesterday was the last day of instruction. So you can tell by the traffic, it's a lot more different now around this area. We start our examination week next week. Our commencement is next week, Saturday. We have two commencements, one in the morning, afternoon, nine-thirty and three-thirty. I'm sorry, nine o'clock and three-thirty. I have everything on my report that I also sent it to to Logan them, so at least he'll be out there. Also let you know, we also have several high school graduations on our campuses, starting from May twelfth on to June first. And I've also listed, and some of them will be, we have Farrington High School on May eighteenth, and the last one will be Punahou on June first. And simply it's because we provide at least an access parking and less trash for the schools to have to clean up. We handle that part. We also now started our joint search for President. Information about our info sections, sessions are going on right now. Please go on our website. Just go into the UH website and put in President's search, and you can actually join in. It's not only for specific group. Everybody can participate. Please do. The university is your university, so please put some input into that. We also, and I want to keep it short so I can get some, some questions. We did, I want to do some follow-up. In February, Daisy, Raya asked about our gates. We lock our gates, you know, off, you know, when the, when the cap is closed and whether emergency vehicles have access towards that. They do not have a key, but we, our public safety folks are on twenty-four-seven, and they have a direct link to them to open up. They do not have a key, but we, our public safety folks are on twenty-four seven and they have a direct link to them to open up the gates. The other thing too is our, the gate is not the strongest gate in the world. So it can easily go through it and, and so on. Um, I also put a very detailed, Laura sent me a list of things, it's also in the report. Um, I will kind of go through that next several meetings and we'll have that. The last thing I want to share is next month, we're gonna have a presentation, thank you to Chair, regarding, we are gonna have a temporary EMS station on campus to offer better services to the, to the community in this area. Um, the nearest one is not close, it's actually, I think Waipahu area. And it covers a lot, only to Waikai, ours will cover a lot more. It's temporary in the sense that if somebody, if they need a place to, um, recoup, we actually have a place for them to be there. Um, but outside of that, I am open for any questions that you may have.
Okay, Laura.
Um, hi Elmer, thank you very much. Um, I'm just reading this for the first time, your handout. Um, you said the Student Success Center, which former Sinclair Library. What I'd like to know is if the Sinclair name is going to stay on the building?
Yes.
Um, for sure, because I knew Marjorie Sinclair very well and her husband was a real contributor to the university. Okay, I wanted to make sure of that. The second part right down here is I'm a consulting party on whatever's gonna be going on with the planning. And of course they haven't responded to me. Um, and, um, it says about all the entryways that are going on. I, I assume they're gonna make some standard, or not standard, but, uh, more uniform, um, entrance ways that designated as welcome to UH or whatever they're gonna say. Now, I of course would definitely be like to be on this because I've actually designated one of the names that was, is already called the Moiliili Gateway, I got that through the Board of Regents. And I'm also very concerned about the Founder's Gate entrance at Dole and University. Um, and so all of these things coming together, I would really, really like to be on that consulting party team again, uh, before they do anything that's really strange, um, that will be compromising and it won't be, um, you know, and I would invite a lot of other people into, there's, you know, anybody from cultural practitioners to, to people who have been associated with the university or whatever for a long time too.
Okay, can we, can, let, let me, um, kind of explain a little bit for everybody. Um, the University of Hawaii has different entryways into the campus. Um, and we're not only talking about the main ones on Dole, um, Wailei Way and so on, which is closer to Midback, but also lower campus. And each of that needs some kind of, um, a revitalization of that area to make it more welcoming. And that's what Laura is talking about is we have so for many years trying to figure out a way to kind of upgrade that area. So we're still in the planning and cost stage, but at least it's underway. It's been several years in which this discussion is ongoing. Um, we hope that we can get it going right away, but Laura, yes, absolutely, we will, we will get that on there, but. Yeah, yes.
A follow-up question. Uh, I live down the street and as a UH alum, I often walk to campus. And I hope your gateway planning also includes the, the bird poop zone under H1 on University and the other bird poop zone towards the pool? Both of those?
Actually, that, that, that is exactly one of the main reasons we started this, with that particular area.
Because it's a horrible welcoming, you know, right, so thank you.
Well, interestingly, we did have a, a great, great discussion with Kama M.A.S. schools, which is actually most of the owner in that area, to kind of revitalize that whole area. The challenge for us is that it is, our responsibility is where our gate is, right? Before that, it's a little more challenging. So partnered, partnerships with others will be important, but yes, I know that, I walked that quite a bit.
And, and I'd love to say too, a few years back, I was one of the community members, along with other community members, that we painted a very simple copper design on, we painted out all of the undersides of both of the freeway, um, uh, underpasses. And it was really nice, people did graffiti it, we, we had people with jars of paint and came right back in and fixed it up. And then somebody unfortunately painted the whole thing out and then it's deteriorated from then on. So it was already a community action group that was keeping things really nice and it made you feel more welcome when you were going under those underpasses. So just to let you know.
Okay, next, Daisy.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Elmer for that, um, follow-up question that connect, explains how at least the first responders are able to get onto campus should they be needed. Um, the other question is, doesn't UH own the property near, um, Diamond Head Theater across from Leahi Avenue? That's been vacant for years. Could that be a place for the Student Activity Center? If one is proposed, then, um, KCC, which is part of the UH system, could also, um, use it too besides the Manoa only? Could that be a possibility instead of maybe doing it down at Dole and, um, University perhaps?
Thank you for the question. Um, just to give some background on this, um, today the Board of Regents, um, had a report on that particular lot. That lot is on the Makai side of Leahi Hospital. It's where that grassy area and fenced off with used with parking. Um, that is a UH system, it is not, does it only for Manoa? So I, my best answer for you is it has to take into account all campuses, not only Manoa. Um, I understand what you're asking for Daisy, um, but I'm not sure if that's the only gonna be a, a student success center. It might be even more. Today at the Board of Regents, they had a developer come in and talk about the different uses of, of that lot. Um, one of the interesting have, things that happened two to three years ago, that looks like you're approve a bill, um, um, asking the Department of Hawaii Homelands to take, um, to work with the University of Hawaii if we use that as homestead land. Um, that is, is still an active discussion, um, but at least with our administration, they've been able to kind of find someplace living more conducive for more homesteads than that smaller area. But Daisy, to answer your simple question, yes, that can happen. Um, but that, that is more of a bigger question that maybe, um, I'm hoping to set up a meeting with the neighborhood boards to talk about our master plan, the UH's master plan, which is very important. Um, and maybe at that, that time we can, you can ask the more specific question of those individuals. But hopefully I, that answers some of your questions, Daisy.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, do we have any more questions, anybody? You get, you're getting off easy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, good to have you back. Yeah. Uh, we have Governor's Representative, Matthew.
Yes, good morning, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Devont, I'm the Governor's Representative. Um, just following up on something from last month and I think the month before that. Um, there had been a request for, um, the state's homelessness coordinator, John Mizuno, um, to come and talk to the board along with, um, Sam Moku from the city. And so the, the two offices have been speaking and I think last month, um, it was kind of talked about, maybe the June meeting, uh, they would come and address the board. So they are in touch with, uh, on that. Um, so hopefully we can get that together for the June meeting. Um, we're, we're nearing the end of the legislative session, so everybody in the state is busy, um, looking at what, all the new laws that are gonna be put into place. Um, I think people have seen in the news that one of the big pieces of legislation that went through was the, um, income tax cuts, the state income tax cuts, and that's gonna be pretty big. Um, but other than that, um, I, I did want to follow up with something that Hasee Nishibun brought up earlier about the Troy Barboza Torch Run. And I just wanted to put in a plug for that, it's a great event. There's gonna be a lot of law enforcement involved in that. Um, the Attorney General is planning on attending that. Um, and it is a really special event that goes to benefit the Special Olympics. So other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, I may not have the answers immediately, but I will go back and get the answers. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Joanne.
Hi. Um, I want to ask you, what is your name again? I can't see it.
Matt.
Matt. Okay, are you, you said you're with the Governor's Office, you know, I've called that office, oh, I would say over fifty times, have not gotten a response from anybody there. I've called before John Mizuno came around, I've called James Koshiba, have not got a response from there. I've called Representative Nishimoto, many times left messages, Della Bellotti, who else, Glenn Wakai. Do you guys not answer citizens with concerns?
So I will check to see whether, um, John Mizuno has received messages from you. I do recall, um, several months ago when James Koshiba was still a homelessness coordinator, um, you had brought up a similar concern. And I did check, I, I think your concern at that time was that his voicemail box was full and you were not able to leave a message.
Voicemail box full, no return phone calls, nothing?
Yes, and then I, I think that I did report it a future, at a later meeting, um, that he, he did speak with you and you did have a conversation.
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, he's no longer with the state, so I'm unfortunately not gonna be able to follow up with him, but I will follow up with John Mizuno in his office.
Yeah, because I left several messages, especially the Governor's Office, I know he might not call me back, but somebody who represents him to relay messages to him. But also my representative, my immediate representative, Scott Nishimoto's office, they don't return phone calls either. So I actually called the Republican Glenn Ward's office, Diamond Garcia, they answered the phone, but none of my Democrats representatives, they don't answer the telephone or do callbacks. So I'm very concerned about people representing them, representing us and not returning phone calls. How would they know what, what is our concern if they don't answer the phone? I've been down to the legislature as well too, that's the only way you get a response, which is not really a response either because it's basically, the representative is not there and you have to talk to their assistant, who never gets back to you later either. So I need to have somebody get back to me about this because it's very concerning. We're paying people to not respond to us, which is very kind of irritating to me.
Okay, I will follow up with John Mizuno's office. As far as your representatives, um, you'll have to follow up with them directly because I'm, I'm only the Governor's Representative.
I did, nobody, I can't get a hold of them, so maybe through you, you can get him to get them to respond, how's that?
I think they're here.
Okay, uh, we're gonna be moving on here. Okay, thank you, Joanne. Daisy?
Thanks Chair, quick question. What is the status of the Hawaiian homeland, um, for the seniors at the old stadium ballroom? It's been months and I believe Sanford B. Carr is also a runner up for the stadium development. But then I believe that the Hawaiian home seniors deserve their, um, place to stay because they've been waiting for years and I hope it gets built before many of them pass on. So if, I don't know, I would appreciate a status on that particular project, thank you.
That's a great question and I will find out for you, uh, and report at the next meeting.
Hi Matt, this is Logan from the NCO. Uh, just wanted to make you aware and, uh, just for anyone that's watching, um, if you weren't able to take a look at the Mayor's Representatives memo that was provided by my office, uh, Sam Moku from the Department of Community Services did confirm that he and John Mizuno will attend the August first, uh, Makali Moiliili Neighborhood Board Meeting.
Thank you very much, I was not aware that the date had actually been set.
All right, anybody else have questions? No? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Uh, we can't do filing or filling vacancies right now, so we don't have Quarm. Uh, next we'll go with, uh, the Bikie Bike Share, Bikie Bike, excuse me, Bikie Bike Share. And Todd will be passing out things.
Something on screen.
Thank you.
Aloha, I'm Makali and Moiliili Neighborhood Board and Chair. Um, I'm the Executive Director of, uh, Bike Share Hawaii. We oversee, so we're now about to enter our seventh year. We've done, um, with your help and your neighbors' help, um, over fifteen million miles of travel and over six million trips. This is just an annual, um, data sheet, you can find it on our website, gobiki.org. Um, we have over a hundred and thirty-two stations. Uh, last year was about, uh, eight hundred thousand rides. It's always been a majority of the rides have been locals. Um, if you screen up, we have seventeen thousand, I'm sorry, go up. Yeah, so I can, there you go, perfect. Uh, we have about seventeen thousand, uh, dues paying members. Um, let's see, what else? Most people have the Free Spirit Pass, which is like a bucket of three hundred minutes, so you can use them anytime within a year. So if you miss your bus or, you know, you go into work with your, your spouse and they say, you know, you're on your own now, then you can use your card as kind of like a safety net. Um, for the price of one bus pass, one adult bus pass, you can get four monthly passes for your family. So it's definitely a value. Unlimited rides for thirty minutes each. And if you scroll just a little bit up, there you go. So the neighborhood's to the right. Um, Waikiki, Alamoana, Kakaako have the highest usage, but they also have the highest number of, um, stations. And then look at that, Makali Moiliili is number three. And your three biggest, highest use stations is, um, Station four, five, four. That's Makali and King next to Central Pacific Bank. The next highest in your area is Date and Paani, which is over towards Eisenberg. And then the third largest use is the King and University Station, um, not at Halemahana, but across the street on the Puck's Alley side. Um, if you scroll up a little bit more, we have a higher percentage of female riders than most systems in the US. Typically it's in the twenty percent range, we're at, we're at forty. Um, pretty much everyone above the age of sixteen, uh, uses Bikie, especially as they become older. We're not allowed to rent to children yet, so. Um, income, pretty much the majority of our riders are Alice households, people that aren't the most wealthy. If you scroll up a little bit more, a little bit more, there you go. Um, it shows you what people realize once they join Bikie. Um, save money, uh, exercise, you know, instead of, uh, sitting in traffic, you're exercising when you get, go around. And then I think the biggest key for our neighborhoods here, speaking as a local resident, is seventy, seventeen percent of our members, their household sold a car once they joined Bikie. So that frees up the, the parking spaces that are all very competitive on-street in our neighborhoods. And then additionally, nineteen percent of our members use Bikie to get to transit. A lot of people, especially in Waikiki, work graveyard shift and transit, as you probably know, doesn't work really well after about ten PM. So Bikie gets them to the, the country bus or a little further out to the cheap parking places. Um, additionally, this, this month, we are raising our rates for locals for the first time in seven years sadly. Um, but we're using that money to, to buy two hundred and eighty-eight more bikes. COVID was really difficult. We lost over four hundred bikes to theft and vandalism. Um, HPD did what they could, but as you know, it was kind of crazy around here for a while. So that's the majority of it, you can find this on our website, gobiki.org. And we also have a ten dollar a month low income pass for folks on SNAP and other, um, government plans. Any questions?
I, I, um, just one real quick thing. Laao and, uh, Laao and, uh, and what is that?
Date.
Date Street?
Maybe.
That, that bridge there, that, right there on that corner, this little bridge? If you look down inside the bridge, there's a bike.
Chop shop?
Chop shop.
Yeah, we, most of, um, anytime you see a Bikie bike that looks lonely and has been pushed in the bushes or something like that, just give our eight hundred number a call.
Well, it's huge.
Yeah, no, so, um, I, I'm a transportation planner, I've been working in bicycle things for about thirty years. Um, bicycle parts cannot be traced, they're like currency. Um, most of our parts, other than the cheap parts, you need a security tool to take them off. So, you know, the guys that may steal a Bikie, if it gets a flat tire, they just leave it. So then we fix it and put it back into the system, so. But anyway, please, if you, um, if you see a Bikie bike that's just abandoned, give us a call and we'll make sure it gets fixed. Thank you.
Okay, Laura?
Yeah, very quickly, there's, there is, it's may not be your cooliana, but there's a, there's a company that's right by that, um, Raising Kane, um, building, the checkerboard building, and they seem to put out their mopeds, or maybe it's people And they seem to put out their mopeds, or maybe it's people parking their mopeds there, right there in the sidewalk. That's not really where they should be. That'd be, you know, sidewalk is for the for people.
I actually lived behind that building. I know what you're talking about. Those are those are students. Um there's free moped parking in the garage at Halemahana. You should call Halemahana. And um it's Gray Gray Star is the company. Um the bike racks used to have a sticker that said bike parking only. So that could be an enforcement issue with our friends from HPD. Yeah, but it does um narrow the sidewalk quite a bit.
One second.
Oh.
Daisy? More questions?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um you mentioned you that bekey is planning to get electrical electric bicycles. Um.
Yes, so we 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 have.
With lithium or some other battery?
No, it'll be lithium. So all of our bekey bikes, except for one location, are parked outside. And all of our bekey bikes, the batteries would have a um certification. So they wouldn't be a gray market battery. That's that's a lot of the fires you're seeing in New York City are just kind of. Um third-hand gray market batteries from 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 companies that don't do this for um a business. Um but the electric bikes, you probably wouldn't see them for a year or two. We just applied for uh federal funding. Um and we wouldn't, we would not replace all the bikes, just add about twenty percent of e-bikes so that people could pedal easier into the back of Palolo. And back of Manoa and up to New Wano. That's why we don't serve those areas now. It's very difficult because everyone loves to ride downhill, but no one likes to ride uphill.
Okay, another question is um the some of the city workers in lieu of um giving up their cars. And their parking are given uh free bekey uh membership. Is that also applied to the state and maybe federal workers too?
Um. So I know the city's been working diligently on that. Until recently, most most state and county employees use their own personal passes for work trips. But I know there was a bill at the legislature to to provide that type of benefit for the state workers, but I think it died sadly.
All right, fixed.
Okay, uh just made three questions now since I had to wait that long.
Okay, make it four.
Follow up on Daisy's question uh with the e-bikes. Number one, how would that happen with the recharging of the batteries?
Good question.
Two, are you gonna charge a higher rate for e-bikes? And then three, um is bekey bikes, I think it was subsidized in the beginning. Is it still?
No, well, we're just like, so right now, all of the revenue for the system comes from a member, um basically, it's whatever people pay to use the bikes. Uh that goes to the maintenance, that goes to pay off the five million dollar private loan that started the system. So the city is one of our major partners, but they only provide the space for the stations, kind of like a bus stop. Um we haven't received any any operations subsidy um since day one. Um they helped in the beginning for uh doing the public outreach. Um but you know, that is something they could change in the future, you know, if they decided to assist. And that's also one reason why. Majority of the stations are still in in Waikiki and Kakaako, uh Alamoana. Those those areas have so such a high utilization, they pay for themselves. And they also, those neighborhoods subsidize our neighborhood here and Chinatown and places that don't have as high a a ridership. Um and your question about e- e-bike charges? That is, that has not been yet decided, but typically that is what a lot of communities do. They charge uh maybe a dollar additional for a ride. So right now, people are paying seventy cents to a dollar if they have the monthly membership. It's like a bus pass. The more you use it, the the lower the price goes for that month. A lot of communities then add a dollar to an e-bike just to pay for the additional maintenance and the upkeep. And the system we're planning now, the bikes would recharge at the station. So we'd have to, we're working, we're talking to HECO and private property owners to connect those stations because we don't want to drive around extra. And have to take bikes to the shop and recharge them. That's not very environmental. Um. The additional thing we're trying to work out, if we do that station that way wired to the the grid. Um we're also talking about maybe adding an EV charger for for people that, you know, like you and I rent apartments, we can't charge our EVs at home. So we're trying to make the kind of like a mobility hub, they call it. So there's add add additional value because not everyone can bicycle every day. Any others?
Last call for questions. Alrighty, thank you very much.
Mahalo.
Okay, due to note Quarm, um we can't talk about the discussion motion to change location. Next, next we have Laura doing resolution. No Quarm, so it doesn't. No. It's tough, sorry. Sorry. I'm here. Okay, the resolution to request a full environmental impact statement, D I S, for the Alaway Canal, University Avenue. McCully Moko Street, Residential Neighborhood Site. Laura's gonna do that. We're gonna have to shell that until next meeting. E discussion motion to reset recess and reschedule the July's Neighborhood Board Meeting. We're gonna have to shell that till next month also. Uh three absence letter for two of our our board members. We'll have to work on that also. And approval for a written summary for the video record. We can't do that either. So now we're down to council member Say. He's online.
Hi, Dave.
Hello, how are you?
I'm here fine. Good evening, everyone. My report is in the chat, but I'd like to share with the residents who are on tonight that uh. There was a lot of issues that uh came before the office this past month. Let me start off first with the homeless at the Old Stadium Park. Forty-eight citations have been given out, eight individual court orders, four arrests, and two point five tons of trash has been disposed of from that area. Homeless at the Alaway Promenade Promenade area, that's another one that uh the homeless is there once more. The Houston Ditch Maintenance, Department of Facilities Maintenance responds. Currently, our Honolulu Yard is trying to catch up with our battle backlog. Houston Ditch is not on the schedule as yet. However, it is expected to be done by the end of September, October of twenty twenty-four. And this is pending available resources. Starting off with constituency concerns, this is in regards to Eisenberg and Houston Street. We did make a request for the maintenance of overgrowth for the Houston Ditch, the area nearest to six six six, six one six Houston Street. Moving on to the next page that I have. The homeless individuals fronting the Old Kukua Market in Moiliili. As of four thirty twenty-four, we have been working with the KCAA preschool. And nearby res- businesses on homeless presence and property near the Old Kukua Market. Core, which is a city program, has begun visiting the area regularly and most of the large encampment fronting the Old Kukua Market has gone away. There is still one homeless individual that leaves in the mornings. HPD, the Institute of Human Services, and the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center is aware, and they are also visiting the area on a regular basis. New business to take over the property is Honolulu Coffee Company. They have talked to the neighbors and assured neighbors that they will not, they will do their part in being a good neighbor in regards to addressing the homeless. There was, next one is the area of se- several light poles that are not working on the bike path in the back of Iolani School. Alaway Elementary School, Alaway Neighborhood Park, down to the Old Alaway Community Clubhouse by McCully Street and Kapilani. We have sent that request in to the MD's office and the Department of Facility Maintenance is aware. Next, we have the other one dealing with uh. Young and Peakoi. One of our residents asked a question about the demolition. That is a new program that is coming, not a program, but a project. That is coming up, which is uh developed by the group called Trade Wins Capital and Sanford Car Development. And did the uh developers make a presentation to the Moiliili McCully Neighborhood Board, David?
No.
Well, they made a presentation to the uh Makiki Tanlis, and I believe Chair Ross was there, and they also made a presentation, if I'm not mistaken, to the. Manoa Neighborhood Board. So if you would like to make a request for them, that would be fine. I can contact them. Okay, then next we have the Alaway Bridge, which uh I believe Laura made the request. In keeping in with what I stated earlier, there is a budget proviso in trying to address the height and depth of the. Bridge itself, and I think last week's Thursday's Town Hall meeting, I hope she got the answer in regards to. This particular project is not a. Plan, design, construction project, but it is gonna be a design bill project. So the opportunity for Laura and the residents to add their, you know. Issues or concerns in will be addressed when this particular design bill contractor is appointed. The next one would be a suspicious blue Cadillac parked at the Old Stadium Park parking lot. The Department of uh. Police, the police department is aware of it and they're looking into it. With the community policing team. Another one was the Allo- Iolani School students parking at Alaway Park. So we have talked to the uh security at Iolani School to see if the students are parking at Alaway Park. Homeless presence around KCAA, which I also shared with you earlier, that is the Kukua Market area. And finally, not finally, we also have homeless fronting nineteen seventeen Algoroba Street. Then we have the issue in regards to the container at Kamoku Street that has been taken care of. And I think the condominium that is adjacent to where the container is, uh it's, they're supposed to get a permit. Because it was affecting the traffic flow. Requesting increased maintenance of cart ride field. Questioning now, which is being brought up this past two weeks, is the issue of the parking meters along Eisenberg Street. And the staff and I went through the research and told the constituents that it is a project that has been in the works since twenty seventeen. Department of Transportation in collaboration with the Department of Facilities Maintenance is to try to mitigate parking turnover. And I just had another email from a a young woman who's married, who whereby she has a hard time finding parking, but uh. They really need the parking, but it's gonna be metered after an approval by DTS and DFM to put in and construct the parking meters. Uh last one, David, I had about six to seven different calls. Okay, and then the other issue is the Houston Ditch overgrowth once more at six three one Coolidge Street where Date Street and Citron Street meet. Okay, that's also part of that. Uh Laura also gave us a call in regards to the updated lower height of the proposed Alaway Bridge. I shared with you folks earlier. Now that it is a project, that is a design bill, you will have the opportunity. Because that's what the Department of Transportation Services Director Roger Martin shared with all of the residents. At the Manoa Town Hall meeting conducted by Mayor Blangiardi. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. It is in the chat as far as my report. Thank you.
Okay, I do have one quick question.
Yep.
So that, that the project for the Alaway Bridge, it's already been decided? Is that what you're saying with?
No, no, it's it's not been decided yet. We're going to another format like before it was gonna be the conventional way of how we in the county construct projects. It is a planning, design, construction. Okay, we are now moving towards a plan called Design Bill where the residents, like Roger Roger Martin said. They'll have another opportunity and crack and see what the design may look like.
Huh. But um.
Um should I?
Yeah.
Come come, um okay, um council member Say, um first of all, the name of the water body is called Ala Nayo now. So I would like to see the Houston ditch name excised or put in parenthesis. We worked hard. I went to the community uh that co- um the naming um. Um I don't know, Convention Bureau in the state to get it changed back to what it was originally. So it was, it's an unfortunate thing. Mr. Houston was not particularly a good neighbor and he was kind of did a lot of things in an angry way and he got his name on things. The street, including the ditch. So um uh it would be much nicer to um uh go back to calling it the Ala Nayo, okay? And then.
N A I O, right.
And Ala Nayo, N A I O. It really goes up to right where the escarpment is at at um Church of the Crossroads and it comes out probably in a seep. That probably comes from uh Manoa Waters some somewhere, I'm not sure. Um the other thing is, yes, you're saying design build and you're deferring to Roger Martin and all of those things. But in fact, what I said most importantly to Mayor Blangiardi, and I think I got a big applause from the crowd there. Namely, that it's a, we want community um engagement, community interaction. That means we want community members, and I would like to include myself on that, on something, if it's called design build, then it has to be. Um uh community people involving in it. And first of all, and second of all, although I couldn't present it today, there's another um um Hawaii, um let's see, um. Um Hawaii uh how's it, uh how uh, I forget the name of it anyway. It's a, it's a transit um or a federal thing that's a four F. And the four F says, basically, you cannot um take some parkland from one place. And not have a full amount of park that's compensated for. This is going to bisect. The way it's designed now, it's gonna bisect the park and the and the canal, all of which are parkways. And that will not be judged to be um possible. So why haven't they done that before? They haven't gone through any of the the Bird Migratory Act. They haven't gone through the Zero Build Ordinance. They haven't gone through anything. That would even halfway reassure the community that they've done their due diligence, and they have not. They just thought, we'll just plunk it down there and we'll just build. And it's uh regrettable that that's the way it's going on. So community involvement is all important. I think I had one other thing to say, but I can't remember what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next, Joanne.
Hi, Calvin.
Hi, hi, Joanne. Nice to see you again.
Okay, so anyway, the same thing I brought up at the Town Hall meeting, but also for Houston Street, I'm. Ask them to make designated sidewalks because the cars are parked all over the place. There's no sidewalk here. I haven't heard anything about that. I haven't um all the illegal parkings. I mean, some police know about it, some police don't know about it, some cite them, some don't cite them. Uh you know, grass growing all over the place, which should be the city and county cutting it too. Um and why did you, do you know of, oh and then the, I wanted to find out why the Tokai University, I thought it was. Housing people who were not homeless, but then Mayor Blangiardi said they are homeless. I'm like, why are they giving? Why are they putting them in our area to transition? Everybody like Sam Moku says, why don't you put them in other neighborhoods as well? We have our share. I think Kahala would be happy to have some. And so would Hawaii Kai and all these other locations. We don't need a whole bunch of transitional housing in our area. So that's another thing. You can answer me later by texting me, or not texting me, but emailing me. And then also, do you know of any bills that were passed that would criminalize the conduct of the homeless? Not their status, like the uh what is that, the the Supreme Court is there fighting over right now? Not the status, but the conduct.
That, I will leave it to my colleagues at the State Legislature, Joanne.
Who doesn't answer the phone when I call, so.
It does, it does deal with civil rights and I respect the uh concerns that you have. But uh I'll wait to see what happens with the Supreme Court decision in regard, in regards to the grant pass versus the uh. Group that filed the challenge or the, yeah, issue that is before the Supreme Court in regards to county home rule.
Well, can you get uh get on the case about the designated parking and the illegal parking on the street?
I can get the staff, uh Andrew and Janelle is with me also, so we'll get back on you as far.
Yeah, I've been talking to Andrew.
Okay.
Andrew knows about. Okay. If I could say something to Joanne.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um Daisy?
Thanks, Chair. Hi, Calvin. My question is um.
Hi Calvin, my question is, according to Ompo Executive Director, my guarantee, the city has already received $25 million from the federal government to build the Alaway Bridge. So I can't understand why he, the mayor had to have it in his budget to add more money when you already have $25 million to work with. The other question is that according, I talked to Director Morton, and he told me that this is part of the Honolulu Complete Street project. It's not just a bridge, it's going to continue all the way up to Alaway Boulevard. And you know that they want to narrow the roadway, they want to make more connections, they want to make more bicycle lanes, et cetera. So I'm kind of confused. Why are we asking for more money when we already have $25 million that the city can start using? We understand planners need to, to, you know, start designing things, make sure that they have the correct information, check out the soil, because as you know, by the school, Alaway School area, that face, you know, all those furrow chickens are making their nest or they're digging something and it's very, very, it's not very sturdy. So I don't understand why a big bridge has to be on that side. So I mean, these are questions that really needs to be answered because it's going to affect everybody. So apparently Director Morton seems to have all the answers. So we would, it would be really nice if he could explain, not only to the people that attend, but you know, to the communities, because it's going to affect everyone. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, Daisy. And maybe Logan, can you help me in getting back with the administration in regards to Daisy's concerns?
Say, this is Logan. Yeah, I can include that in the mayor's report for follow-up if you'd like.
Yeah, that'll be fine, because it is part of the administration. And I, and being very honest, as a council member, we're not involved that much as far as the details of the process that we're going through right now. But for the macro, I do know that it is going to be now a design bill project.
Okay, can I?
All right, Laura.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to respond to Joanne. Joanne, you come with the same concerns, you're orally presenting them, you need to write them down, but I would say read, 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 because the nature, no, no, the nature, I'm going to talk about the Houston area. You cannot put in a sidewalk unless the property owners have agreed to pay the money for it.
You can't do that.
I can't talk to somebody else? Oh, well, I'll talk to Calvin Seay then, okay? And, and, and the responsibility of the project owners are to, the owner, property owners are to clean out to the edge of the unencumbered curb side. So those two things, Joanne, just read up, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, one more.
Hi Councilman, a very quick question, the meters on Eisenberg, is that going to be a 24/7? Or is it like free after five or six o'clock, something like that?
That's a very good question. Andrew, would you know if it is going to be a 24/7 or, you know, a time period?
Hi, this is Andrew, council member says, it's going to be two hour parking max and then after hours, so after 6:30 PM, it's going to be free.
Thank you.
Maybe Andrew, if you don't mind, Dave, could we put that in the report also, the chat? And maybe I should get Andrew and I to walk the area to share that with the residents. But it's all of us that have to communicate what we have just stated to the residents. And I think one approach is going through the board.
Yes, I'll definitely put in the information in the chat.
Thank you.
Okay, one more here.
Carolyn, this is just, this is kind of a question for several folks, I guess. Councilmember, I know you put the information in the chat, however, we who are on site can't see it. Is there a way for Logan, for the chat attachments to be put into the Google Drive before the minutes come out because, so we could look at them right away?
Yeah, sure, I can do that. I'll just take a copy because I always keep the WebEx chat at the end of the meetings just for, for when I'm drafting the minutes. But what I can do is I'll just drop that into a Word doc and I'll throw that into the Google Drive tomorrow.
Okay, Joanne.
Hold on, I'm trying to eat at the same time. But anyway, I, regarding something, you know, I called. As far as the designated sidewalk, I take care of my area. Other people here are renters, okay? They don't do a damn thing. There's, it's horrible, the way they throw all the, what am I supposed to do? Go and knock on everybody's door and say, take care of your area? I do call the landlord, they don't do anything either. So that's not their property, they say it's the city and county. So if that is your property, then put up signs that say, no parking, no trash, no whatever. Then that would help. If you put up signs, signage, I ask for signage. This is to Calvin Seay.
I'm here, Joanne, I got my dog to me.
So if you put up signage in the area, you don't need to, maybe you can't afford it. I don't see why you can't afford it, but it's probably because you do so many homeless cleanups in this area. We don't have any money to make a designated sidewalk, but you could draw a line or something there, paint a line to show where the, where it belongs to the owner and where it belongs to the city and county. So people don't park. So there is a sidewalk for people to walk on and they're not walking on the street. I repeat the same thing over and over because nothing gets done, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne. Okay. Okay, anybody else have any questions or anything like that? Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Paul. Okay, next, Representative Andrew Garrett. I don't think he's here. Representative Scott Nishimoto? Staff's not there either.
Hello, Chair, I'm sorry, this is Taylor from Representative Nishimoto's office. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hi Chair, everybody, I'm just speaking on behalf of Representative Nishimoto. Him along with the representatives are finishing up session in the sense of tomorrow being Saini Day. So, you know, we are excited for that to happen and I'm happy to take back any questions back to my boss. And please feel free to reach us via phone or email at any time.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, Joanne, question?
Yeah, Taylor, did you get my phone call, my numerous phone calls? You said right now, so we should contact you by email or by phone. I've been trying to do that. And also, did you, because I asked to find out what bills were passed, I don't have time to read. I got other things in my life going on that I don't have time to read everything about, you know, what you guys are doing. So that's why I called you to find out. Did any of the bills get passed that do anything to remove homeless off their streets? Making it a misdemeanor by their conduct?
Oh, I'm gonna have to go back and check on the reports, but yes, we've documented and received your phone calls.
Do you not answer phone calls?
No, we do, but at this time, you know, we were, we didn't want. But, and you know that, because you stopped by and we talked for a long time, Joanne.
Because I have to, you know why I have to stop by? Because you don't answer the telephone.
I know, unfortunately, if, but as you may be aware, in many cases, a lot of the times they come up a bit threatening, so my boss screens everything. But I have been documenting everything. Okay.
Are you guys that afraid of somebody like?
Okay, we're going to move on here. Okay. Anybody have any more questions? Or? Okay, moving along. Thank you, by the way. Thank you. Okay, okay. Representative Adrian Tam.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Flora from Representative Tam's office, District 24. Representative able to attend tonight, so I am here in his stead. We are excited that the legislative session is wrapping up tomorrow on Saini Day. We will have a list of bills that passed coming out in our newsletter. Some of them are already in our newsletter. There'll be more about the budget update in our June newsletter. We like to do a whole review of all the budget items, but I have some exciting updates about CIPs that are upcoming. Kinley High School, Alaway Elementary School, Alaway Small Boat Harbor have all received CIP funds and as well as the library. And then also we have our grant and aids that were awarded. The ones in this district are the Japanese Cultural Center, Omo Iliili Community Center. So we're really excited and proud that you all are going to receive those monies. Other than that, if you have any questions, we're in our office, interims coming up, so it's the perfect time to approach us with either revisiting bills that didn't pass this year or starting to talk to us about already about next year. It's never too soon to start. I'm always available and excited to research and talk with you about your ideas for next January. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions for Flora? No, no, no. Nobody calling in? Nope. Okay, thank you, Flora.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have Senator Les Hara. See him there, oh, hello.
Hello. Good evening, good evening. This is, I'm Les from Senator Hara's office, representing myself, I guess. First off, I can just say that I just looked up and there, there really no, I looked at all the bill descriptions of the bills that passed and there are none, no bills that would criminalize a homeless person. So that's the answer to your question, Joanne. One of the big issues was the Yimby Law, Yes in My Backyard. It's a Senate Bill 3202 that would allow up to one or two residences in people's backyards if there is enough infrastructure, sewer water and et cetera. And I know the city of County, City of Honolulu was opposed it. It's a, it's a strategy to have more housing. It does not focus on affordable housing at all. That was one of the strong criticisms, but the bill did pass because it, and I voted no. There were nine noes in the Senate and 16 yeses. And of the 16 yeses, there are four yes with reservations. So there are a number of senators who were not clearly yes or no, but felt that on balance that the bill was okay. And I just happened to disagree, but that's the result of that bill. There was a condo insurance bill that failed. And that will be an issue in our area where you have, well, especially Marco Polo area where you have a lot of condos. And I'm working with the Hawaii Education Economic Education Association to do a panel discussion on the condo insurance kind of a problem. And we believe that it will be a huge problem. And that we had failed to accomplish this year. Are you open to any questions? The governor has until the end of June, June 24th, to identify any bills that he will, he might veto. And it'll give the legislature 10 days to prepare for a possible veto. And then on July 9th, the governor has to either veto or allow bills to become law. And any of those, any of those that on, that he vetoed on July 9th, the legislature could come in and with one vote override them, the veto bills with two thirds vote. But it's, we rarely do that to begin with and it's even more rare to do it in an election year. And so I do not expect that, but that is a possibility. And I guess things as we shake out over the next week, next weeks, next month, we'll have a better feel and the members will have, you know, the public and your members will have more time to review any bills and ask questions and, and identify which ones you might be more interested in. So I conclude that for now and be open to any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions for the senator? We have one, wait. You go right up there.
Evening Senator, I'm just curious about the water sewage. When you spoke about it in the 3202. I noticed that you have dumped water inside the drains, like, you know, from the washing machines. Is that normal?
So there are two systems. One is a stormwater system where the, you know, in the streets, you know, and not sure what gets connected, not the sewers. And so you're asking about whether, what kind of water goes into, say that again? It's not really a state issue, but I'll, let me try to, to shape it so that we can get an answer for you. So can you say that again?
You know, like water, washing machines?
Washing machines.
Yeah, and then it goes straight into the stream instead of the gutter?
I don't know. Would the council, any, anyone that's in the city know? That would be, that would be the city stormwater system. Where, so it doesn't need to be treated. And I know that, yes, I don't know, that's a, that's a fact question. I'm not sure if anyone else knows the question now. I'm sorry, that's a city issue, I don't, I don't read.
My bad, sorry, bro.
No, is Councilmember Seay still there?
Yes, I am, Dave.
Paul.
Okay, the young man did ask a very good question. There is two systems. One system is the sewer system, which is tied to just the major systems of, as far as sewer. Meaning if you have a hole on Houston or Eisenberg, you have a lateral that is, that is connected to the main line that goes into the sewer system to San Island. The other one is your stormwater system whereby, that's the system whereby the water from our streets goes into the big tunnels that we have back in the valleys and in the city that goes into the Alaway, you're correct, the stormwater system. So the sewage is the one that we try to take care of, but our stormwater system, as far as the tunnels, the pipes that we have are all deteriorating in East Honolulu. And that's where I brought it up, that if the state of Hawaii could help the county of Oahu in replacing these stormwater systems, it would be very beneficial. For the sewer systems, we are doing replacements, if you notice, in different parts of East Honolulu. Because yes, most of the pipes are very old and they're cracking. A good example was what happened in Hawaii Kai. And now we're doing another phase two of the San Island Sewer Treatment System. That's why if you folks recall, that in, was it five or maybe five to eight years ago, whereby we had changed the way we are being charged to our sewer system. And it was based upon the volume of water that we use. And the reason why is because, yeah, we're trying to figure out a way for those families that have more kids or more children or more renters or whatever, the volume that they use is, they're using more water to take care of their toilets. Right?
Yes, thank you. One quick question, does the revolving water system built of 92 cover that or no?
A portion, a portion of it, yes.
Only a portion, oh yeah.
Yeah, because what's happening now is that we're building the second phase of the San Island Sewer Treatment Plant, which was a federal consent decree that we have to do it no matter what because that was the water that is the sewer that we have to clean it and then it's dumped three or four miles out into the ocean. So that's, that's why it's been a very difficult issue for all of us because I don't want to increase the sewer water fees, the water, the sewer fees. I don't want to increase the water fees that we have all adopted for this year. Where the VWS came before the neighborhood boards, asking that we are going to increase it to have that money be used for replacement of our. you know, water lines that you see with the breakage that have occurring. And these are issues, but the city is doing a good job with the support of the state. Don't get me wrong.
Do they change it to dollars, like sixteen dollars? Like how it uses in the, the bills, the water bill, do they charge you or just one flat rate?
No, it's just a flat rate based, then based upon what the, the volume of water that you use, you pay the difference. So if I was using one thousand gallons a, a, a month and the basic rate is a thousand, you know, gallons a month, I'll just pay that fat, flat fee on top of what I pay for the use of water now. So sewer, you have two. The flat rate that, you know, if you don't use as much, you just have to pay this dollar amount. But anything above that threshold, you pay more. Do you understand that? The, the more you use, the more you pay.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything for Senator Hara? No? Joanne, okay, Joanne?
Oh, good evening, Senator Hara. I hope I don't sound threatening to you. But anyway, I don't know what that HB, I, I turned you, I turned the volume down. Did you say HB 3202?
SB 3202.
SB?
Yeah, S, SB 3202.
Okay, I'll go look it up and read it. So basically no bill passed, did it?
Oh, no, the Senate Bill 30, oh, no, on the homeless issue, the question, no bill was even, it never came to the floor. I, I, there was no, we, there was, I hadn't heard any discussion and any conversation at the Capitol about adding some kind of a, a new misdemeanor or some kind of a, a crime regarding homeless.
Yeah, that was that HB 813 that got killed twice already.
Okay.
If you can find out who killed the bill, let me know.
What's the bill number?
HB 813.
Oh, so you want to know where it died?
Yeah, I think it just died before it even got into the.
Oh, you, you, no hearing then. You know, it, it, it just died a natural death because we get thousands of bills and only several hundred get, you know, well, hundreds get moved.
There were two like that from Senator Nishimoto's, not Senator, Representative Nishimoto's office. Both were killed. But if there's why it was killed is my question and maybe you can answer me later.
No, no, you don't, you don't, because, because, well, I mean, this is, you're asking politician why it happened?
Yeah, but this is a major problem.
There's, there's not, you're not going to get a reason.
Oh, so it just gets killed, but there's, but the problem doesn't get solved either then, huh?
Well, you have more people in the legislature like you, then, you know, might something happen. But Scott Nishimoto is just one person.
No, there are others, but then it just got killed. So I just wanted to know if anything got passed.
No, nothing.
I hope I didn't sound threatening to you.
Oh, no, you're not threatening, no, you're actually, you're actually more kind to me. Uh, thank you.
Oh, no, that was just, just being sarcastic just now.
Oh, well, I got your sarcasm.
Okay, good. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Senator. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Sure.
Next, Senator Sharon Morawaki.
Hey, Charles Izumoto, on behalf of Senator Sharon Morawaki. I, I posted our report and I just want to go over a few things. So Senator Morawaki worked really hard with Rep. Nishimoto to get a bunch of capital improvement projects for McCully and Moiliili. It's in our report, but highlights are 2 million to resurface tennis courts at McKinley, 4 million for ADA requirements. Washington, they, Mike wants to put a new band room, so that's going to be 9.5 million that we actually got appropriated. And then it also will renovate the current band room to have, to be able to have other classroom activities there. Luna Lila, we have 3.5 million for a covered playport. And then there was a GIA for Moiliili Community Senator, Community Center for their activities that they have there. And we have a bunch of bills that we have on our report as well. A few on homelessness and crime. Joanne, I just wanted to, a, a couple of them that passed are, I think, going to be good and they deal with mental illness and drug abuse. And there's SB 3139, which does crisis intervention where police can sort of divert services. They, they can take people to where they need services the most in terms of when they're having mental illness, crisis. And SB 2557 enhances assisted community treatment program. And there's a few crime bills that we have too. I think one from our constituents, they were saying that, you know, what if people commit repeat violent misdemeanor crimes? Shouldn't that be a more, shouldn't that build to a felony? And so that's what we introduced. If you are a repeat misdemeanor felon, misdemeanorant, then it kind of accumulates to a felony. And so after the fourth misdemeanor violent crime, then prosecutors have an option to charge a felony. So that's what we have and, you know, take a look at our report as to the bills that we've passed and the CIP improvements as well. So if you have any questions, I can take that right now. Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead.
No, I'm just going to make a statement about the due check rule. A lot of experience in the issue with friends and family. And I think if you really want to change the problem, it's not imposing harsher crimes, but actually making it more lenient because the mentality of the individual becomes much more different and much more extreme. But that's just a statement and I'll leave it open for later to, to look into that. But if you really want to address the problem, it's kind of, it, it sounds crazy, but it will work.
Thanks. So let Senator Morawaki know that.
Okay, Joanne?
So anyway, going back to what you said, the bills that are passed, I already know that court comes out. But a lot of these people, they have mental issues. They can't get help. I keep saying you can't get help on the street. And they only ask them, would you like to go? It's not like by force. They only ask them, do you want to go? And if they say no, then they remain on the street and they cut, they've caused a lot of problems in this area. Pooping, defecating on the sidewalk. I just had one guy talk to me who owns a shop. He's leasing it up. Nobody wants to lease it. It's so filthy there. The homeless are right in front of there. He's called the police over and over. So you're passing bills that are helping these homeless, the drug addicts, but nothing that helps the community itself, the business owners, people who live in this area who can't even walk on the sidewalk. I couldn't, I went to eat sushi yesterday and just had to pass all these people there by 7-Eleven and by that same shop that this man was complaining about. And it was horrible. I wanted to walk on the road. I didn't want to walk. There's a whole bunch of, it's, the street looks yellow. I don't know if that's pee or anything. And there's just so much rubbish there and it's so dirty. And I have an autoimmune problem. I don't want to pass by. So what happens to us when all these bills don't force them to get off? Not ask them, force them to get off because they are breaking the law and they have no, they're not going to get any help on the street. What are they going to get? Look at them. They're not getting any help on the street. It's just getting worse. So that's why I think there has to be stricter laws and stricter enforcement, not just let them get away with it. That's not going to do anything for them. But they have all their rights. Yeah, that's my question is why can't be, there be stricter laws? Not the same old laws every year?
Okay.
So I, Joanne, I, you know, I shop in Chinatown and I pass a lot of things. I, I actually, today I encountered human feces on the sidewalk. And that wasn't pleasant and, you know, there's always homeless there. This is a nation of laws and people have rights. And this is one of the laws that we passed, like that I just talked about, where we can get people closer to where the police can decide, okay, you know, I'm going to do a crisis intervention. I had training. This person is mentally ill and I can transport them to a place where they should be. And so it, it's a good law and it's a good bill that we passed. It gets us closer to where we want to go. I want to be where you want to be. And I, I think that Senator Morawaki, along with Rep. Nishimoto, who voted for this measure and the majority of the legislature, I mean, they, I, I don't even know if there was a vote against, there wasn't a vote against, I don't think. I'm not positive, but I think that they all support trying to get people to a better place. And that's what we're trying to do. But there's also freedoms in the United States and there's laws and, and that's what we're trying to do at the same time. And so we're trying to get there and we're trying to meet your needs.
No, that's.
Well said. Charles? Any questions?
Can I respond?
No. Okay, moving along.
Don't I get two questions?
Go ahead, John. You're right. Two questions.
He disappeared. Anyway, I just, I'll leave this thought with you and this is how I think. You ever saw the movie Helen Keller? You know, I feel like you guys are the enabling parents to Helen Keller. And then Ann Sullivan is the one that needs to come around to change the whole system because the homeless will go nowhere if you keep enabling them to be the way they are. That's my final answer to you, not my answer, but statement. Be Ann Sullivan, not Helen Keller's parents.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Charles, thank you. Senator Carol Fukunaga, she said that she wasn't going to be here, but she sent her staff? No, no. Yeah, she, she wasn't going to be here. Yes.
Sorry, Karen Lind again. I just wanted to mention that Senator Fukunaga's, her report was filed early on the shared drive. So I looked at that and there was a very comprehensive answer to a question from the last board meeting by, I don't remember who it was, a resident who asked, was asking about a affordable housing building being put up on Alexander Street. So she went out and, and got a, got an answer yesterday, or on the 30th of April, so. And thank you for that. And then I guess Senator Morawaki's input was in the chat also, so that could be posted.
I gotta read that.
Right. I was just talking to Logan. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next, any resident and community comments? Anybody have anything? Anybody have anything to say? It's just a brief mention of items or concerns. I'm sitting on on the agenda. Anybody?
One issue, actually, I, I mentioned this to Logan at the beginning. The minutes to past meetings are, are really useful and helpful, especially since they reference the, the videos. So you can go back and watch everything in detail if you want. My question was whether the, the statements that say, during discussion, it says questions, comments and concerns came afterwards. My question was whether the minutes could include just a, a brief list of what the topics were that were covered. That way, if you're going back to look at the, the two hour video or two hour plus video, you would know whether to go through the whole thing to, to listen to the specific.
Number seven, you're talking.
This is a, I'm a resident and it's a comment I'm making about.
Okay, but that, I know what you're saying.
Yes.
Put on number seven, you're talking.
Oh, well, no, I'm talking about the, the, the minutes of every meeting that come out. And after, and I don't have a copy of the, of a sample with me right now, but it says questions, comments and concerns.
So, so what Karen is asking is if during the questions, comments and concerns, if the specific topics can be listed?
In the minutes. Just a quick list, so we know whether to, to bother to go listen to all the questions, comments and concerns. And Logan said that that would be something that the board could ask to be included in the minutes. No? Okay.
So that, yeah, that would be an amendment to the minutes. So my office, we provide the draft copy and at that point, the, the, the board or community members can propose amendments and then the board can choose to add those amendments if, like, they would need a motion to, you know, like usual to add things to the minutes.
Okay, so just as a blanket thing, I can't make a request that the subject item.
Yeah, my, my, my office provides pretty much a uniform copy for.
Okay, that, that was my question. In the past, they were very detailed and, and you didn't have.
Yeah, those, that was before we had the, the video component.
Right, okay. That answers the question. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm just going to clarify something. I stepped out of bounds last, a few times back again. When you have a property that's on the streets, such as Houston or Kualae or any of the others that have unimproved sidewalks, okay? The property owner is responsible out to the edge where the asphalt is. That's the edge of the property line. They're responsible for it. While the property pins may be back in, you're still responsible out to the edge of the property. Just call it in, call in a 911. They'll figure out where to, to take, take the property owner to task for not weed whacking or doing whatever. And probably there will never be improved sidewalks unless all of the property owners want to pay big assessments to get sidewalks put in. It's because the koolianas originally way back in the Hawaiian times were never done in straight lines like you see the most recent developments. So just accept it, but you can get the weed whacking going. Thanks.
Okay. Okie dokie. Joanne? Joanne?
Going back to, going back to the sidewalk. The reason I'm bringing this up and I, like I said, I've already called the police. I've called every department regarding just drawing a line or something because there are so many elderly people in my area, in wheelchairs. There is an elderly home across the street. They're walking on this, on the road because they can't find a place to walk on the sidewalk. One, mark my words, one of these days, somebody's going to get hit. And then you remember that I said this. It's only when somebody gets hurt, the government does something. Like when Sarayara got hit on Kapilani, then they put the speed bump. We don't want to wait till somebody gets hit. Something can be done as simple as drawing a line, putting up signage, do not block your cars here, whatever. But, you know, I mean, they can't be that dumb that they can't figure that out. So I called and called and called. I'm not going to put up the signs myself. So anyway, when somebody is dead on the street, then remember that I brought this up.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along. Next regular meeting is June 6th at 6:30 right here. Feature agenda items. If you want to be on the agenda, let me know a week, two weeks before. Olelo broadcast, I did watch that, by the way. It was pretty interesting. And that's where I went back and saw the, the questions and things like that. That's the second and fourth Sunday of the month. I all, I watched it on Friday, actually. Bulky item picked up, picks up pickups by appointments only. And you can get ahold of them, 808-768-3200 or go to the website. Reporting neighborhood issues, go to. Reporting neighborhood issues, go to honolulugovernment.comconcerns or Honolulu three-one-one. After that is, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry about the, sorry about us.
Next one.
Yeah, you can put it on next.
Sorry about that. Sorry.